Welcome, everybody. I'm Dan Ghoradnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting. As is our custom, we're going to kick things off with a few votes before moving on to today's public hearings. Those hearings include a few items before us located in Brooklyn and one in Staten Island. First up, the public is welcome to testify on a proposal that would create the capacity for hundreds of jobs as part of the 1160 Flushing Avenue rezoning in Bushwick with a proposed mix of commercial office space, retail, and light industrial space, a sign of opportunities for transit-oriented job growth in the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone. The Commission will also hold a hearing on a special permit for the King's Highway self-storage in East Flatbush. And we will also receive testimony on a plan to acquire office space at 850 Third Avenue in Sunset Park to consolidate the Human Resources Administration's IT services. If approved, this location near Industry City, Greenwood Cemetery, and the D N R train stations would have over 760 employees. And finally, in Great Kill, Staten Island, the Commission will hear from the public on a proposal to remove designated open space to build a two-family home at 56 William Avenue within the Special South Richmond Development District. That's what we've got today. So let's get it started. Madam Secretary, the floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal in in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, May 24, 2023. I will now call the roll. Chair Ghoradnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozarg.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowe.
Here.
Commissioner Doak is on Zoom.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Commissioner Kramani.
Here.
Commissioner Marden.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 10, 2023.
Great. Thank you very much. I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 10th, seconded by Commissioner Rampershad. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one and two. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, June 7, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. Thank you very much. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolutions are adopted, and please book some time on your calendar for June 7. We expect it will be a busy day. Okay, Madam Secretary.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page five. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers three and four. Ocean Crest rezoning, CD 14. Calendar number three, C 230041ZMQ. Calendar number four, N 230042ZRQ. And the matter of application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Ocean Crest rezoning for favorable reports on calendar numbers three and four. Chair Ghoradnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozarg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
I vote no on this, but I wanted to acknowledge the thoughtful and complete response that we got from the applicant. This is an applicant that has taken our concerns and our questions seriously. However, as the applicant acknowledges, the evacuation plan relies on infrastructure improvements that are not there yet, but also on a road network that according to the Department of Environmental Protections, stormwater flooding maps shows will be significantly compromised. So I can't vote yes, because I think that this is too much of a vulnerable location to increase residential density right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Um, yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers three and four. Borough of Queens, calendar number five, 43rd Avenue de mapping, CD 11, C 210323MMQ. And the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning 43rd Avenue de mapping for a favorable report on calendar number five. Chair Ghoradnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozarg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number five. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine, 111 Howard Avenue, CD 1. Calendar number six, N 230131ZAR. Calendar number seven, N 230132ZAR. Calendar number eight, N 230133ZAR. Calendar number nine, N 230134ZAR. As a matter of an application for the grant of authorizations concerning 111 Howard Avenue for the for the adoption on calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine. Chair Ghoradnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozarg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers six, seven, eight, and nine have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page seven.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to ask those who are testifying today to limit their remarks to three minutes, after which we will gently but persistently ask you to cease speaking. And let me ask you, Madam Secretary, what is the first item on our agenda for today?
Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 10, 56 William Avenue, CD 3, N 230068ZRR. Public hearing on the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning 56 William Avenue.
Great. Thank you very much. I have for calendar number 10 and 56 William Avenue, I have Todd Dale remotely. Mr. Dale, when you are set and ready, you are recognized for three minutes.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Todd Dale. I am from Rothrude, Rothrude Inspector, on behalf of the applicant property owner, the estate of Clement Marant, for this application, which seeks a proposed zoning text amendment for Section 107-06 to modify the district plan, Appendix A, remove an area of designated open space within the Special South Richmond Development District that will facilitate development of a two-family home. Move to slide two, please. This designated open space to be removed is an area mapped between William Avenue and Armstrong Avenue, approximately 12,000 square feet. It's located in R31 district within the special district. The proposed action would affect the development site indicated on red, that would be Lot 40 and Block 5282 that is currently vacant. The project area consists of lots also 42, 100, and 116 within Block 5282, portions of which are all currently developed. The designated open space, as indicated on the diagram, is located only in the southern portion of the development site, Lot 40. The proposed development would be a conforming and complying two-family home, approximately 2,000 square feet, .5 FAR, two stories with three accessory parking spaces. Move to slide four, please. The residential or the area development is characterized by one- and two-family residential developments similar to the proposed development, including the adjacent lots immediately north and south of the development site. To the west and adjacent to the development site is a portion of King Street that is open and improved. It's a dead-end street that is currently only used to access two homes, those existing homes on Lot 116 and 100. You could move to slide nine, please. We would just note additionally that this designated open space that's proposed to be removed is the only such space within 600 feet of the site. It's an isolated small fragment. The designated open space was previously under review for removal with other similar small designated open spaces in conjunction with a city review of the special district. With that action paused, the property owner has pursued the current action. Finally, we would just note that the property owner previously obtained approval from the Board of Standard Appeals pursuant to General City Law 35 to prevent development of the proposed home in the bed of a mapped but unbuilt portion of King Street. In conjunction with that approval from the Board of Standard Appeals, the subject action would facilitate proposed development of the residential home. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony here. Let me just pose the the basic question, which is, this is this designated open space covers a smidge of the proposed development site. There are designated open spaces throughout the South Richmond Special District. What was or is the purpose of this particular designated open space here? And can you just make a an argument for its removal in the context of why it is not needed as a designated open space?
I believe that the designated open space, the original purpose was because there was this vacant undeveloped lot adjacent to the existing dead-end portion of King Street. It was also mapped. King Street does run through the subject, a portion of the subject lot, and the open space appears to have been designed to just coordinate with this this area of the mapped but unbuilt King Street. As you did note, it is only a small portion of the subject site that is located within the map street and corresponding designated open space, and the prior BSA action is action would facilitate development of this small lot with this small home. And it's our belief that removal of designated space, because there is no other designated open space within the 600 feet, it would not be contrary to the purpose of designated open space, you know, the intent of open spaces within the special district.
Great, thank you. And as you know, Mr. Dale, and for the benefit of the Commission, we are in the process of proposing reforms to the South Richmond Special District, currently in in the process, certified by this Commission a number of weeks ago, and got a unanimously favorable report from Staten Island Community Board III last night. So I just want to share that with all of you. Okay, that was my question here. Commissioner Cirullo.
And just a quick question, and I realize this is the land use action to facilitate the development of the house. But is there a design for the house? And do you have any sense where on the property the house will actually be sitting? Just to be clear where my question is headed, I the houses are all equally set back on this block, and there is pre-existing sidewalks in through this neighborhood, particularly on William, except in on this parcel. And I just want to ensure that the development of the house is a two-family house, which there are two-family homes on this block, not immediately surrounding this parcel, but definitely obviously pursuant to zoning, it's permissible, but that we're not changing the flow of the sidewalk or anything about how the house sits in relation to its neighbors on the block.
Understood. I think that is a very valid question. I believe if you could go to slide 15, I think that that may answer your question, Commissioner. Slide 15 has a copy of the current and valid approved site plan from the Board of Standard and Appeals. And if you look at slide 15, you'll see that that home is conforming and complying, and you can see that that is where the proposed home would be situated, so it would not disturb the existing sidewalk as part of the development. It would require improvement of that sidewalk to form a consistent path for pedestrians. And the proposed site plan shows that the home is actually situated further back than the two existing homes, so it would not disturb the frontage along William Avenue.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, I just had a question about designated open spaces in general, and I guess this probably should be put to staff, but who is responsible for the maintenance of designated open spaces? Is it city? Is it parks? Who maintains them?
Do you want to take a crack at that, Mr. Dale? Or shall we refer that to our Staten Island team? I actually don't think that, well, I think I know what the answer is, but I don't want to, I don't want to say, because I'm not 100% certain. Go ahead.
I would actually defer to the Staten Island team. I'm not.
Yeah, let's come back to that.
I think it depends on the state.
Yeah, I think they're designated.
They're not owned.
We don't think that there is ongoing maintenance of designated open spaces, but we will confirm that with the Staten Island team. All right, Mr. Dale, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it, and we are going to to move along here. I do not see any other members of the public wishing to testify on calendar number 10, so I'm just going to give it a second, see if anybody shows up. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Madam Secretary.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 11, 853rd Avenue, HRA office space, CD 7, N Public hearing on the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning 853rd Avenue, HRA office space.
Great, thank you very much. And in support of this application, we have an applicant team from our sister agencies, and they are Brushti Patel, Rizwana Sheikh, George Donahue, Kyle Daniels, John Kosa, and Chris Grove, from a variety of the New York City Human Resources Administration, and DCAST. So welcome to all of you, and we look forward to your presentation when you are when you are ready for three minutes.
To the applicant, don't they get ten?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rizwana Sheikh.
Morning.
Assistant Deputy Commissioner in charge of facilities for New York City Human Resources Administration. Next slide, please. HRA is seeking a 20-year lease to relocate and consolidate its information technology services headquarters at 853rd Avenue, which is located between 30th Streets to the north, 32nd Street to the south, and between Second and Third Avenues in Brooklyn within Community District 7. This is an eight-story mixed-use building, of which HRA is proposing to occupy a portion of the sixth floor and the entire seventh floor, totaling approximately 158,000 square feet, accommodating 768 staff. We will also be leasing four parking spaces equipped with two electrical vehicle charging stations. Should this project move forward, construction is expected to be completed second quarter of 2025. Next slide, please. While several sites were considered for this consolidation, we preferred this site for several reasons, including transportation. This location is easily accessible by various means. On Fourth Avenue, subway lines D N R can be accessed at 36th Street and the R line on 25th Street as well. There are also numerous local buses, a protected Fourth Avenue bike path, as well as Gowanus Expressway. Next slide, please. This location is also ideal for being equipped with several means of access to and circulation within the building. Next slide, please. As depicted on the image to the left, there are three entrances, six passenger elevators, 12 freight elevators, and several loading docks, as well as staging area, which will be extremely useful as we deploy equipment to other HRA facilities throughout the five boroughs. The photo on the top right shows the proposed HRA entrances on Third Avenue and the 24/7 access via 30th Street. The photo in the middle shows the retail lobby entrance from the parking lot, which will also allow HRA staff access. The photo on the bottom right shows loading dock entrance and parking lot. Next slide, please. Additionally, the large floor plates require fewer floors, resulting in more efficient use of space by avoiding duplication of services. Most importantly, we have found that this encourages collaboration, fosters teamwork, and provides optimal flexibility based on our ever-changing needs. As mentioned, we will consolidate from various locations throughout the city, as indicated on this slide. And 853rd Avenue was one of the only locations large enough to facilitate this. In conclusion, consolidating our ITS team at a single location is essential to our agency as we continue to progress utilizing technology to improve public service. Thank you so much, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. I'll just pose a couple and then turn to colleagues if they have them. First is, my understanding is that for this building, there was a deed modification in 2020 that allowed for up to 268,000 square feet to be occupied by commercial office space, such as this or other, for example. The amount of space that you are seeking to acquire is 158,000 square feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with the office space that HRA would be taking, in addition to whatever is existing commercial office space, how much total commercial office space would occupy this building?
HRA is a client agency, is not privy to this information. I'm not sure if our colleagues from EDC have joined, but have if should they have not joined, we will certainly reach out to them and will provide you with a response.
Okay, thank you. And the core of the question is, I'm just interested in knowing if this keeps it under the 268,000 feet that are that are permitted. And then my second question is, how the Commission or how any of us should think about locating city offices here as opposed to anywhere else where we might want to activate downtown areas? Obviously, the city has a strategy to to do that, Broadway Junction, other areas. Tell us how we should how from your perspective, we should be thinking about that.
I'll take it from a client agency perspective. You know, I think we are very good partners in neighborhoods. With the number of staff that will occupy this space, we would certainly be patronizing local businesses and improve local businesses, but I would also defer to my colleague at DCAST if they would want to add to this response.
DCAST, would you like to jump in or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Good morning.
This is George Donahue. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, thank you for your time, and we appreciate your respect and your guidance. We did look at quite a few sites, approximately 10 different sites, to figure out what would satisfy this assignment. We needed to have operationally effective building, something that was a large size with large floor plates. It could not be expensive, and it had to have accessibility to public transportation. So that was the reasoning behind it. You know, we looked at lots of places in different parts of the area, and they were either too small, the floor plates not close enough to public transportation, or too expensive. So this was our best solution.
Okay, Commissioner Benjamin.
I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure who would best be answering them, so you can also get back to me. The first thing I'd like is if you could give us a list, a written list of the requirements for the space and the other sites that you looked at. My the corollary to that is if you could also tell us either now or in writing later on. Uh, my, the corollary to that is if you could also tell us either now or in writing later on, what the specifics were, uh, why these, I think it's seven different offices need to be together? What is their synergy or other that requires that they be in this space together? And how is that going to make the IT operation more efficient or effective for the constituent members of the HRA agencies? That's kind of question number one in large form. Question number two, I suspect relates more to EDC is many years ago, we, the city designated this whole area to retain it as an M three use. And that we were going to encourage other manufacturers to repopulate and relocate in this whole part of the industrial waterfront. I think Commissioner Osorio will ask some questions about that also. But how does this benefit the city's overall plan? And what does it say about the city's overall plan for the industrial repopulation of this part of the Brooklyn waterfront? As we know, there's already retail incursions here. Industry City is filled with retail, north of here. Um, you have Home Depot proceeding. Um, so what is this plan for this as a manufacturing area? And we have Costco, of course, to the south. Is this plan for this to be a manufacturing area still in EDC's and business development plans? Or are we kind of conceding space by space that this is no longer going to be an M three for heavy duty industrial uses and it's going to be something else? That's kind of the gist of question number two. Question number three relates to what is, where those other seven entities are? And who is going to backfill them? Are we going to backfill them? And with particular emphasis on those spaces that have leases, long term leases, and particularly at Metro Tech, which I find very troubling since the city poured lots of money into the Metro Tech development. And it appears that part of the reason HRA would like to leave that is because the rents have escalated to a point that they find it undesirable or not cost effective. So I'd like to understand those spaces, what's going to happen to them? And are we creating problems for those seven areas? Particularly at a time when office space is not fully being utilized. I can't imagine that people would be charging top dollar when they don't have other tenants, if they don't have other tenants. And I will, with that, I will yield, I don't necessarily expect you to answer them now, although if you can, that's great. But I'd still like it in writing.
Sure, thank you Commissioner Benjamin. I did take notes of your questions. Yes, we'll definitely provide you responses in writing. We'll start backwards. We'll start with question number three about the other seven spaces where we have IT staff. So what has happened is that there's a finite amount of space at fifteen Metro Tech and we grew. And unfortunately, we weren't able to grow our space at fifteen Metro Tech. So we found pockets within our existing facilities where we have other programs. And we accommodated the ITS team based on various initiatives throughout the years. We put forty people here, fifty people there, so on and so forth. And you see them on the slide that's up on the screen right now. It's at two sixty eleventh avenue, thirty three Beaver, Pearl Street, for World Trade Center, four seventy Vanderbilt, two seventy five Bergen and two fifty Livingston Street. ITS does not have a prominent presence at these locations. Other programs have more of a prominent occupancy of these spaces. So we plan to continue to maintain those as part of our facilities planning. We don't see an impact there. And so I'm just going to pivot to a portion of your question one, where I believe you asked, why do we want to consolidate? It's always been ITS's wish to have all their staff in one location. Because as you know, I, you know, technology evolves. And at a moment's notice, we might be part of an initiative. And it's very helpful when we have team members together so that we can form groups and develop our programming, so on and so forth. And so this has been a request for this program for quite some time. And so we welcome that. We're excited about that. I think the agency's direction is going to move towards technology and we don't foresee that changing. So this would be very beneficial to us. So Commissioner Benjamin, the other questions, we will certainly get back to you in writing. And indeed, question number two, we'll be reaching out to EDC for a response.
Okay, thank you very much. And if you could also add to what's on the screen right now, the number of square feet you have in each of those locations? Your seven locations currently?
Absolutely. We'll provide that to you in writing.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation. I, I second both of my colleagues' sets of questions. I'm going to try not to repeat. But in terms of the land use rationale, I, I did want to add to the list whether you can please respond to how this proposal relates to specifically the city's comprehensive waterfront plan and the priorities that have been set for maritime uses and industrial in the significant maritime and industrial area. But also the EDC's a plan for offshore wind in the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal. So, so, and, and that pivots to what I think is my, my first question, which is really whether you've explored from an economic development point of view, what is the cost of compromising potential job growth in the green jobs economy associated with the current investments that are in place for the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal associated specifically with offshore wind, which is an industry that is booming and is clearly requiring additional open space, sorry, office space. So, so that's my, my second question. I don't know if you want to respond to that now or if, if just as Commissioner Benjamin said, add that to the list?
Um, thank you Commissioner Osorio. We will definitely add that to the list and provide you with a written response.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My second question has to do with the fact that this is a location that is vulnerable to flooding. This is currently within the five hundred year floodplain and is going to be in the one hundred year floodplain pretty soon. And so my understanding is that even though you're going to be in the six and seven floors, you're going to be having information technology, which in my mind, eh, you know, is servers and computers. And, and so I'm, I'm trying to understand, why would you locate that type of sensitive infrastructure in an area that will be subject to flooding? If you can help us understand sort of like, what is the rationale? Why, how did that factor in? Your analysis, which you listed, has been primarily focusing on transportation, access to transportation and cost.
Uh, that's a very good question Commissioner Osorio. We do not plan to locate our data center at this location. We have other plans for our data center. This location will be strictly for our staff. And we do not envision any servers or any of that equipment on the lower levels. It'll be limited to the upper floors and limited to the location itself and not impact our other facilities throughout New York City.
So just to clarify, the, the, there will no, there will not be any servers or, or a data center related infrastructure either, even in the six or seven floors?
That's correct.
Thank you so much for that. I really appreciate that.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Ramperchad?
Thank you for the presentation. I had a quick question with regards to the timeline of the project. In our briefing package, we see that at fifteen Metro Tech, the lease is going to expire in July of twenty twenty four. And in one of the slides you show, I guess you're going to occupy in the second quarter of twenty twenty five. Will, will there be a disruption in service? And the second question is, who's going to be doing the build out? Is the landlord doing it or is DCAST doing it with their own contracting department?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, uh, thank you for that question Commissioner Ramperchad. So good to see you here. We were colleagues at Pratt's, so it's fantastic to see you.
Twenty one years ago.
That's right. Oh, sir, please do not give away our age. Five years ago, sir, five years ago. So I would like to call my lifeline at DCAST, Mr. George Donahue, to answer this question.
No problem. So we have a very good relationship with the landlord at fifteen Metro Tech, which is Brookfield. And they're going to help us extend that lease to accommodate us to make the relocation. So we have a good relationship and we're working on that now. And the other part was that we, we don't have construction people where, you know, we do the preliminary designs and test fits, but the landlords will handle the renovation.
Thank you Commissioner. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for your testimony. We'll look forward to the responses to a variety of questions coming out of the hearing today. So we thank our sister agencies for their time and attention. I do not see any members of the public wishing to testify on calendar eleven. So I will close the hearing on that item and we will move on to our next item, calendar number twelve. Madam Secretary.
For Brooklyn, calendar number twelve, eleven sixty Flushing Avenue, CD four, C two one zero three one four ZMK. Public hearing and the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning eleven sixty Flushing Avenue. Notice, a public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above Uler faction to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, so on calendar twelve, uh, we have a sizable applicant team and I'm going to tell you who's here. Uh, it includes Jason Diaz, Vivian Lau, Stephen Fabian, Eric Pilatnik, Tucker Reed, Paul Carr, and Leah Archibald. So welcome to all of you and, um, uh, we have you for ten minutes remotely. Uh, we can see you. When we can hear you, you can go ahead and get started and, uh, and we'll look forward to it. Thank you.
All right. Tucker and Vivian, you're both on mute.
We're here. We're ready. Leah, do you want to get us started or?
Sure. Um, my name is Leah Archibald. I am the Executive Director of Evergreen, which is the local development corporation that works with businesses here in industrial North Brooklyn. And we are delighted to be part of the presentation team for the eleven sixty Flushing Avenue project. I am joined by my colleagues at Totem, Vivian and Tucker. Please introduce yourselves.
Hi, Vivian Liu, part of the development team at Totem. We're a Brooklyn based developer that specializes in community driven development. Our developments focus on a few key principles around affordability, economic mobility, innovative partnerships and sustainable design. And Tucker Reed, my partner is here and you'll be hearing from him in a moment. I think we can move on to the next slide and then Leah, actually the next slide, and then Leah will take it away.
Um, so this is a snapshot of community district four, um, demographic information. But let's actually go to the next slide and, um, uh, I'll tell you a little bit about why our organization is involved. So, you know, we work to help the local manufacturing businesses grow so we can keep high quality jobs here in our community. And one of the reasons we're involved in this project is it, it will help us accomplish some of these goals. When you look at the unemployment rate of seven point two percent being higher than, um, Brooklyn as a whole and the educational attainment rate of twenty six percent being lower than Brooklyn as a whole, you see that this is a ripe opportunity for growing high quality working class jobs, such as those offered in manufacturing, which have lower barriers to entry into the workplace. You need, you don't need high levels of educational attainment or be able to speak English well or even at all. So we're doing, we're, we do our work in our work with eleven sixty Flushing, largely because we think it's a great opportunity to grow high quality working class jobs, especially for folks with some barriers to entry into the workplace. Next slide please. And so not only, you know, is this something our organization is really interested in, but there are a variety of folks that agree with this. You know, I will start out by pointing out, um, City Planning's own North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan has identified exactly this area to encourage high density, um, commercial industrial growth, largely because it's at, you know, a transit point. Um, and of course, in our North Brooklyn Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan, um, we've identified this as a site for growth. But for us, most importantly, it aligns with the Bushwick Community Plan that was assembled over a couple of years by community members. And, you know, specifically, they wanted to, the community wants to support manufacturing business growth. They want to keep Flushing Avenue as an industrial corridor. And they want to see ways to incentivize mixed industrial, commercial development. And the eleven sixty Flushing project does exactly this. Next slide please. May I have the next slide? Thank you. So, um, just a couple of words about our organization's Brownfield Opportunity Area Planning Study. Um, this is, the eleven sixty Flushing project is exactly the sort of use that we've identified that can allow for additional commercial development, i.e. office space in the industrial neighborhood, but still keep, um, keep at least one FAR of, of space for manufacturing uses. So we believe that there is a model to cross subsidize, you know, higher rent commercial spaces and allow slightly lower rent industrial spaces to thrive, thereby keeping the industrial character of the neighborhood and again, creating a home for high quality working class jobs.
Thanks Leah. So if you move on to the next slide, I'll walk you quickly through the actual project details. Next slide, this slide will orient you to the location of the project at the intersection of Flushing and Wyckoff avenues just off the Jefferson Street L stop. The next slide shows the current zoning of the block, which is M one one. And our proposal to increase the floor area and zoning to M one five in line with the goals of the community planning effort Leah just walked you through. Next slide shows a closer aerial view and how the proposed rezoning area starts mid-block and extends to Wyckoff. The next slide shows the, narrows the focus even further to our specific development site. You can see the two tax lots outlined in red here that comprise our development. The next few slides, we can just flip through quickly. These are the various views of the existing conditions today from all four corners of the development site and some additional views around it. And next slide, turning now, next slide to the building program. What really excites us about this project is the potential to forge an industrial development and preservation model developed in partnership with Evergreen that could serve as a precedent for future projects in North Brooklyn and beyond. Specifically in this case, you can see here, we'll be preserving industrial uses on site, providing growth opportunities for new businesses and creating space for community based retail. The space breakdown is here and we have projections showing that the potential to generate hundreds of new jobs, including approximately forty of them industrial. Next slide. Here are some industrial, so excuse me, illustrative layouts along with some comparable precedents. Our plans call for ground floor retail space with a mix of industrial and office on the upper floors. And then the next slide, I'll ask Leah quickly to just jump in and talk about Evergreen's role in curating the tenant mix.
Yeah, so, um, another, um, one of the many services our organization offers is we are actually like a small scale industrial developer ourselves and we have five buildings that we lease out at below market rate. So we have a pretty good handle on what small manufacturers need in terms of real estate. So we're advising on the needs of Brooklyn's small manufacturers. We've been conducting outreach with our colleagues and friends and neighbors within the community. And finally, um, we hope to be here for the long term to, um, in, to ensure that the, um, industrial space is tenanted by industrial tenants and, um, help identify, um, you know, many, we hope to identify tenants from among our local businesses that are moving and growing to locate in the building.
Great, Leah, thank you. If we could go to the next slide. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us. Just to provide some, uh, a lot of thought went in over the last few years, the contextual planning around the site and the rich fabric of Bushwick. And I'll just round out our presentation on the la, next slide. So just kind of walk you through generally the building program quickly. Here you see the real mix of uses between retail, light, industrial, and office, kind of working together, hopefully symbiotically in one building. Uh, we're actually reintroducing an old rail thoroughfare that connects Stewart Avenue to Jefferson Street to create a pedestrian alley, um, that would allow for really unique retail experiences. Uh, we're going to be able to carve these spaces into small footprints for local small businesses. And you also see the really unique ability to kind of blend the retail and industrial uses as we move up into the building. Uh, so you can think about a, um, industrial tenant like a furniture maker or a brewery or something where a, a, a good could be made in the building, but then also have a showroom within, uh, the building context. And if you go to the next slide, you start to see in plan how that alley thoroughfare connects to the dedicated entrance for the rest of the building, the loading dock on Flushing Avenue, which we were really encouraged by the community and the folks at Evergreen to locate on Flushing, which is where the major truck, uh, thoroughfare is. And the next slide, you start to see as we move up into the building, how the uses blend together from the retail to the industrial and then further, next slide, up into the other commercial aspects of the building. What's great about the geometry of the site is we can really craft the, uh, the, uh, spaces within the building. So if tenant wants to take an entire floor, we'll be able to do that. We want to craft it into smaller spaces of 2,000 or 5,000 square feet, which is very much in line with the tenant mix and many of the neighborhoods in Brooklyn today. We have the ability to do that. Uh, and then if we quickly cycle through the last couple of slides, because I think I'm down to my last 30 seconds, you see some illustrative views here of the alleyway, um, some comps and precedents from around the country, the existing condition of that old rail thoroughfare that we're excited to re, uh, reimagine. We'll actually put a one-story retail building on this space, but then move the, uh, the pedestrian connection a little bit to the, uh, west, uh, and open up the site. And then finally, all of our developments, we really work hard, next slide, we really work hard to integrate, uh, sustainability, uh, and green technology. And so we're excited to bring that same conscientiousness to this project. And thank you for our time. We have a pretty ample project team here to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. Um, and before I, uh, kick it off with the Vice Chairman, uh, let me just, um, note, and good to see you all and thank you for this. Um, uh, the, I understand the, the strategy in Evergreen and you, Ms. Archibald, are going to be working to tenant the industrial space here. Talk a little bit about the, the office space. It's 114,000 square feet. Can you say a little bit more about the teneting strategy for, uh, for the office space here?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, you know, the, the, the tenant mix of Bushwick these days is really interesting. There's a lot of creative design, uh, Netflix has a major presence in the neighborhood now, a lot of kind of post-production work. So we're really hoping to thematically, um, um, kind of have a unifying principle around a cluster here. Uh, creative design tenants, they could think of like music production, recording studios, podcast studios, architectural studios, diddle agencies, uh, along with, um, some pretty serious, hopefully, manufacturing tenants. Uh, you could imagine a set designer that has both their front-of-office and back-of-office, uh, production here. Um, you can imagine a synergy, I think, between a lot of kind of blurring the lines of that maker economy, which is really the kind of rallying principle, uh, of this building. Um, and then we also think there's probably some really interesting uses around the kind of retail entertainment, recreation type of use. Uh, this is a bit kind of like Maine and Maine in Bushwick. There's a lot of great nightlife, there's a lot of great restaurants, there's a lot of great destination retail here. Um, so we're really excited about trying to bring back to life a building. Vivian and I actually had the opportunity to tour through, uh, a family, uh, who owned the building back in the 1920s here recently, who used it, uh, for, uh, sweater manufacturing and other type of garment uses. And so we're excited to try to bring this, uh, kind of long dormant corner of Bushwick back to life.
Got it. Thank you very much. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles, then Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, uh, and thank you for your presentation. Um, I just want to ask and I want to, uh, hone in on, um, tenant mix. And I'm just wondering, uh, how you came to your, um, decisions around space allocation? I mean, we're in an IBZ, but, uh, your industrial space allocation is only a little over 20% as opposed to the office space, uh, which looks like it, it comes out to about 60%. Um, I think spec office space, uh, in these times is, is, uh, very optimistic and I think it's, 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 it's good. But, uh, I am nonetheless interested in how you came to, um, these space allocations that, that you propose here.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. Uh, Leah, why don't I start and then maybe you can help, help, uh, help with the answer? Um, so, so one thing, Commissioner, obviously this is a ground-up development and so in order to make the economics of the building pencil out, you know, we really need some rents here that are above what the market rate or even subsidized rate for industrial is in the neighborhood. We would not be able to construct a building of this size without, um, some, some tenants and from the retail to, to the office space that are, that are paying, you know, what is market for, um, for, uh, commercial uses, which you see a real smattering of around, uh, different pockets of kind of the creative economy in Brooklyn today. And so we very much, we, we, we went early to Leah and team and started to kind of try to devise, how do we basically cross-subsidize, uh, the industrial use to bring it back to life here, but in a way that's sustainable so that the rest of the building can function? And so we're really trying to craft our own kind of cross-subsidy across the building here without looking for, you know, government subsidy in any way, where we can use the potentially slightly higher-paying tenants on the retail and office side, uh, commercial side to pay for, to help, help allow us to create new industrial space on this site. But, so Leah, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, and then I guess I'll talk a little bit, you know, you know, our goals as an organization, you know, would certainly be no net loss of manufacturing. And in fact, um, through the Bushwick Community Planning Process, that was the community's goals as well, no net loss of manufacturing space. So, you know, if, if we're keeping what, you know, approximately one FAR of space specifically and exclusively for manufacturing uses, that aligns both with our organization's goals as well as the community goals in the BCP.
Yeah, and the last point I would just make is that we very much think of this as a, a floor, not a ceiling. Right? If we find a great industrial tenant that wants to take a bigger part of the building and Leah and Stephen and the team at Evergreen think it's a viable use that could coexist with some of the other uses, like, we're very much open to growing that footprint, Commissioner. So, so really, we just wanted to come in and set a, a ground floor and, and not a, not a, not a ceiling for us to strive towards.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Osorio.
Hey, thank you so much, Chair, and, and thanks so much for the presentation. Uh, Ms. Archibald, thanks as well for your, your work and your advocacy for industrial retention with Evergreen and before that. I, um, I have a question to build on, uh, Vice Chair Knuckles' question. I also wanted to know why 37.8 square feet of light industrial, why not more? I, I wanted to understand a little bit more the rationale for it. You've partially explained your thinking, but I wanted to know if, if you've marketed the, the property for light industrial and, and what are the results from that right now? I mean, I, I share the concern or maybe the feeling that, eh, the amount of office space that is being allocated sounds, eh, optimistic, um, consider, considering the, the levels of vacancy right now in the city. But also the fact that last week, you know, Vice filed for bankruptcy, who's one of the major tenants for the type of office space slash creative, eh, eh, uses that, uh, uh, used to sort of like illustrate the type of, uh, potential economic development that you're talking about in other MX areas. So in this particular economic climate, I'm wondering why not more light manufacturing? I'm wondering if you can share a little bit, sort of your research, whether you've marketed the position, the, 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 the development with, um, potential tenants and, and help us illustrate how you landed there.
Thank you, Commissioner. So there's a couple of questions there. Let me try to unpack. And again, Leah, I'm going to ask for your help. But, um, uh, first off, you know, we're very much, as you can appreciate, I'm sure, like, very much in the early stages of this effort. We've not marketed the building to tenants yet. It's way too early, obviously, in the process. Like, a 10, this building is have, have to go through ULRP and then another year or two of design development before another year or two of, of construction. So, you know, we're realistically not going to be able to offer tenancy on-site for likely at least three to four years. And most tenants are just, they're not thinking far enough out to be able to make those decisions effectively. I mean, Leah can speak to that much more eloquently than I can, based on her experience. But, but to your point, again, let me, let me just reiterate, one, that the, the industrial, you know, target here is a floor, not a ceiling. So to the extent the marketplace shows us that there is a large demand for more industrial here, I think we're very open to it. Hopefully, that's ringing clear. Um, but also, yeah, I hear you on the, on the vice and I also hear that, listen, there's pockets of Midtown and other areas where, uh, you know, there are some vacancy challenges. You know, I would argue a little bit, though, that in, in many pockets of kind of pedestrian, walkable Brooklyn, we're seeing leasing velocity quite, quite well. I mean, the, um, the Two Trees Development at, at Domino, which is not too far away from this site, recently brought online about 150,000 square feet of office space in a small footprint, 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, and they just successfully leased up the entire building, uh, to kind of smaller-scale tenants. Um, yes, Vice, we, we all read with dismay, uh, the problems Vice has been having. Vice has also been having a lot of problems even pre-COVID, uh-huh, with their financing and getting a little bit out of their skis. So what I would argue that that's a little bit more of a unicorn than a kind of indicator of the leasing market in Brooklyn. I mean, we're seeing across Brooklyn a real demand for small office space within walkable districts and neighborhoods where people want to live and not necessarily have to commute to Manhattan anymore to go to work. But, um, that, that's kind of the, the philosophy behind what we're trying to achieve here. And I, and I will just mention, Leah, sorry, just that I know that you're leasing up a property at Stag Street now and so I don't know if you want to offer any insight from that.
Yeah, you know, here, here's the thing, we, you know, what, again, one of the reasons we're involved is, um, you know, that Totum has agreed to, you know, be, be leasing this to manufacturers at, at an actual market rate that manufacturers can afford, right? You know, we see sometimes out in the world where manufacturing buildings are asking astronomical rents and it's not realistic for manufacturers and then they wave their hands and say, "We can't find a tenant." Well, yeah, you can't find a tenant, 40 bucks a square foot, because that's not what a manufacturer can pay. You know, we acknowledge the numbers got to work out. As a small-time developer, it's a, one of the early lessons, uh, we learn, the number's got to work. So, you know, we understand that in order to get manufacturing space at affordable rates for, um, our constituent base, that it has to be cross-subsidized somehow with somebody else paying, um, a, a little more. And, and, you know, in the absence of, um, you know, public subsidy or, or, uh, some other influx of funds, um, that's how, um, that's how we got to bake the cake, I think.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your insight. I, I have another quick follow-up question, which is, I'm wondering if you can share your perspective or your position in response to the Borough President's, uh, recommendation to remove lots 29 and 40? And, and I'm wondering, you know, in my mind, that doesn't sort of like, uh, affect the overall purpose of what you want to accomplish. And so I want to understand, you know, why, why do you feel that we need to rezone the entire block? And as a, sort of like, uh, spin-off from that question, I also want to understand, eh, just for my own purposes, why, why not the IBIA special permit here? What is sort of your rationale to, to follow this route of action?
Hi, it's Eric, it's Eric Palatnik. I, I can answer that question. Uh, the, the reason why we haven't followed the IBIA route is because of what we've been talking about up until now, which is the uncertainty in the marketplace. And we believe we have a custom-tailored development here that we can find occupancies and tenancies for. And we've been discussing this at length with stakeholders and with potential tenancies and Leah from Evergreen. And we really believe we've come up with something that in this challenging climate, uh, we can make work very, very well and we're highly committed to it. With respect to your question about the rezoning area, the two properties that are not included, uh, that you've mentioned are the two that are at the end of the block, that are at the corner of Wycoff and Flushing. Wycoff is the main commercial corridor. Uh, it is the area where all the action is going on. Uh, the Jefferson Street subway station, of course, is right there. The two buildings you're talking about, one was just recently redeveloped. It's a one-story taxpayer building and has an H and M tenancy in it. The second building is an owner-occupied steel manufacturer. That's at the corner of Jefferson and Wycoff. We believe it's appropriate to include them because it will open the door for expansion for both of those buildings to create a more comprehensive and rational land use plan that incorporates the Wycoff corridor and extends it hopefully to where our property is as well and leaves the opportunity open for future development on a very transit-rich location. So that, that's the rationale of why we've decided not to include the IBIA and that's the rationale, uh, for including the entire zoning district, our property in the district.
Thank you. I have a quick follow-up, if I may. Um, thank you. I, uh, so thank you for, for the response to both questions. Um, so I think that, given the reputation of Evergreen and, uh, the plan that you laid out to monitor and enforce, uh, the presence of light, light manufacturing in sort of like the, the main, um, eh, project area, it makes sense, but sort of like, what, what I don't still, what I still see missing from your response is who's going to enforce that light manufacturing and so forth is going to re, remain in lots 29 and 40, especially in the ones, in the lot that is still used, being used for light industrial, uh, once we change the underlying zoning. So, so is there a plan to, to enforce that there? It sounds like Evergreen will be primarily focused on, on, on the other, the remaining part of the block and which is again, sort of like why this suggestion to remove lots 29 and 40 still makes sense in terms of what you want to accomplish.
I, I understand your question now even further. Are you, you took it to another level and I understand what you're suggesting here. Well, I, I'll offer this as, as a rationale. Uh, the, eh, the rezoning, if it includes this entire block, the way we're proposing this half of the block, will allow for, A, uh, the existing manufacturing user, the steel manufacturer, to expand if they need to. We've spoken to them. They're excited about the rezoning. They don't need the space right now, but you never know. And it won't make anything worse on the Flushing Avenue property because the Flushing Avenue property is now occupied by a retail tenancy. So we believe that this is just going to create opportunity and our hope would be that people will see the success that Leah is going to bring to, with us as a partner on our property. And as time goes on, maybe it'll spread down the block, so a similar business model can be created there.
And then Tucker, I think maybe you should talk about the restrictive deck, um, as, um, an enforcement mechanism.
Sorry. Um, yeah, on, on, on the sites that we control, uh, you know, we will be entering into a restrictive declaration with Evergreen for the enforcement of every promise that we've made here. It's a common practice in all our developments now and, and we use CBAs as a kind of, uh, uh, way of, of communities holding our feet to the fire on the promises that we're making.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cirullo.
Thank you to the team, uh, for this presentation. Just, um, I'm really liked and sort of interested in understanding the, I guess, uh, Tucker, you used the term alley, the alleyway. Um, is that a, just to be clear, is that pedestrian-only? It's not a shared street with vehicular traffic? It, one of the photos, I don't remember what photo it was, uh, maybe it was, I think it was on slide 26. It looked like there might be loading docks on that block or is that was just something that looked like garage doors? I, I just wanted to get a sense of the physical nature of the alleyway, which I find really interesting. And obviously, in terms of sort of the opportunity for public space and how that can relate to retail in that area, whether it's whatever type of retail. But is it envisioned that there would be potentially some plaza-style use, we'll call it, or some, you know, passive outdoor space that would be created and beautified to help, you know, turn that alleyway into something engaging? Um, which I think would have a huge impact on the retail there?
Thank you, Commissioner Cirullo. Uh, can we pull up slide 24? Again, just so I can have a visual, if possible. There's a rendering of the alley, I think, that, that really speaks to the questions that you asked. Um, and you're really speaking my language, obviously, on, on the public space and all our experience together over the years in the bid world. Um, it's, it's thought of as very much as a, it will be a restricted to pedestrian use only. Uh, there'll be no vehicular use in the alley. It's about 20 feet wide. We spent a lot of time in the Brooklyn, Brooklyn office, um, really on , uh, design iterations and coming up with the right geometry here to make it work. Um, so it's, it's, it's not so wide that there's a huge opportunity for a plaza, but you can imagine a lot of greenery. You can imagine some street furniture to support the retail. And I'd also point out what's interesting is above, if you kind of see to the top right, there's, we're going to reinstall the old Metropolitan Sweater sign, uh, on the top of that retail building. And there'll be a pedestrian bridge at the second floor that connects the larger building to the smaller-scale retail. And we very much imagine that as a publicly accessible, or a, a, a rooftop that is accessible to patrons, uh, of the businesses. Um, and so you can imagine, you know, outdoor furniture and shading and really a nice amenity, both for, I think, the users of the building, but also folks in the neighborhood if they want, you know, if you work at a, a local company or a local retailer and you want to come up here and have lunch or grab a cup of coffee after your shopping or just hang out, uh, hopefully it's a real nice amenity for the neighborhood.
Absolutely. And I think that rendering is, is really a nice one. I, I use the term plaza, but it, really, you described it better. I, I mean, that's what I was thinking myself, um, you know, despite the, the terminology. Um, the, the follow-up to that is, if there is street furniture, which I would hope there's an opportunity for, even if there, you know, bistro tables and chairs for people to sit on, and there's beautification through horticulture in, in a following, one of the other slides, um, which you presented, it talked about, you know, big bellies and rain gardens and, um, roof, green roofs. Who, who will maintain these sort of assets, we'll call them, and amenities? Um, what, what is envisioned there since the, the long-term ongoing, uh, benefit is only as good as the long-term commitment to sort of maintaining? And how is that envisioned? Is there any one entity? Is it the landlord? Is there going to be some sort of merchants group that will have that responsibility? What, what's envisioned with regard to that?
Sure. Great question. And of course, you understand maintenance better than anyone. Uh, you know, the, all of the things that we're talking about here from a green infrastructure point of view, so green roofs, bio swirls in the sidewalks, if there are, you know, big belly trashcans or other, um, you know, amenity, neighborhood-facing amenities that are meant to kind of quell the impact of the building on the surrounding context, they'll all be maintained as us, by us as the property owner. We don't envision passing along those responsibility to any outside party. Uh, there's not an organized bid or merchants association here, but it also, it behooves us, you know, as the property owner, to make sure that the property is as functional as possible, serve the needs of our tenants and customers. And so, you know, we'll, we'll be taking on all those responsibilities.
Understood. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fumani?
Hi, good morning. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Um, and I'm very familiar with the Bushwick Community Plan. Um, and I know one of the objectives in that plan is to ensure job growth for Bushwick residents. And just, and you mentioned it at the beginning of the presentation, but wondering if you could just expand a little bit on your thoughts on how the tenant selection, both commercial and manufacturing, w- would offer or require a pipeline, um, to job opportunities or training opportunities for, um, Bushwick residents?
Maybe I'll start and then you finish, Tucker. So speaking on the manufacturing side, um, you know, we, um, you know, one, among the services that we offer to small businesses is help recruiting. Um, we have a, um, a qualified, uh, workforce. We have a number of workforce development partners that we work with, um, including the folks from the Saint Nix Alliance and, um, SBS's Small Business Centers, particularly the manufacturing one in South Brooklyn that's run by our friends at the Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Development Corporation. But we also have community partnerships, right? Like with Community Board Four and other local organizations. So, you know, as, as we're harvesting job orders, we share it with, um, these, uh, local and workforce development organizations to make sure that, um, local folks and folks in our network have opportunities to apply for those jobs. Uh, with regard to training activities, the Saint Nix Workforce Development Team has a really robust, uh, training series, um, in a number of different, um, subsectors, including, um, construction and IT and other things. Um, but they also do straight-up job placement as well. So, um, we've, you know, have a many, many decade-long relationship with, um, uh, their workforce division to, um, help find qualified folks for local job opportunities. Tucker, I'll let you go on.
Yeah, thanks, Leah. And I would just, and Commissioner, thank you so much for the question. It's, it's such an important part of the way, I think, that, that we conceptualize of, of our developments. Well, Vivian and I come out of city government. We really got into private development because we were frustrated at the lack of coordination between public and private sectors quite often. And, and, um, you know, really from inception, uh, in the restrictive declaration and all of our CBAs, we set pretty high standards for ourselves in terms of local hiring and MWB participation from, from the construction period, um, at, at the beginning. So at, at the very start, we're really trying to make sure that construction jobs on this site are going to the local community, uh, through to the, you know, we've worked with Saint Nix on other projects as well, and continue to work with Leah, uh, uh, through to the tenancy of the building and moving forward. And, and I would just close, close on that question by just saying that, you know, we're, we're not going anywhere. We, we plan to be in this community for quite a long time. We, we, as job opportunities come up, we enjoy coordinating with the community board and letting folks know that opportunities are coming. Um, and even as we're out tenancying the building, and hopefully you have heard in our presentation here today, a bit of a philosophy, uh, that we're trying to imbue the building with. And so that will certainly be carried forward into our conversations with future tenants as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you very much. And to the applicant team, we appreciate your time and attention to this. Uh, we, uh, will look forward to speaking with you further on, uh, lots of other matters as well. And, um, with that, I do not see other, uh, members of the public who are wishing to testify, so we will close the hearing on calendar number 12, uh, and we will move on to the next and last item of our, our agenda today, Madam Secretary. Oh, and, uh, before I, you know, before I close, close the hearing, I know I said I'd close it, I do want to note that the record will remain open here through Monday, June 5th at 5:00 PM. I'd receive written comments on the DEIS. So, now it's closed. Thank you. Let's move on to the next one.
For Brooklyn, calendar numbers 13 and 14, King's Highway Self-Storage, CD17, calendar number 13, C230049ZSK, calendar number 14, N2, C230049AZSK. Public hearing on the matter of applications for special permits concerning King's Highway Self-Storage.
Great. Uh, thank you very much. And with that, we have another applicant team for 10 minutes. Uh, it includes Gina Tuchan, Howard Weiss, Malik Knight, Daud, Alyssa Quill, Anthony Musto, and Hiram Rothkrug. Uh, so, welcome. Nice to have you here with us in the room. If the, if the button is pushed and it's nice and green, then you're ready to go.
The presentation up there. Okay, okay, I have it, okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Howard Weiss, David Hutcherson Citron. And, um, we're here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, and I need my six-year-old granddaughter to help me with this. Otherwise, there we go. Are you? Okay, thank you. All right, next, please. So we're, we're here on behalf of the applicant, seeking a, a special permit to allow a self-storage facility at, uh, the project site. And, um, the project site is in East Flatbush, Brooklyn Community Board, District 17. Next slide, please. And the site is located in M11 zoning district. It actually, uh, straddles an R4 residential district to its north. Next slide, please. Uh, and you can see on the tax map, the, the site outlined in red, and you can see towards north, 26, uh, one and two-family homes on Witty Lane, and then four additional homes along King's Highway that straddles the project site. Next slide, please. Um, we are in the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ. As shown on map one, it's a fairly sizable IBZ. There are two additional maps that take, uh, the IBZ, uh, to the east. Next slide, please. Here, here is an image of, uh, our, uh, project site outlined in red. It's, it's an oddly-shaped, uh, flag lot-through lot. Uh, and you could see on King's Highway to the left, we have 30.7 feet of frontage. The balance of the site sets back 200 feet and in front of the site, between the site and, and King's Highway are two lots developed with two warehousing buildings. Um, then over to the right, E65th Street, that corner that straddles Witty Lane, uh, that's the other frontage. It's up to a width of 19.5 feet. And then to our south is the Long Island Railroad Bay, Bay Ridge rail, rail line right-of-way. Next slide, please. And you can see in terms of the land use, again, immediately 20 north, it's all residential, including, including straddling our site. There, there's the right-of-way to our south. And then the purple shaded area, um, is the warehousing buildings. And there's a small swath of commercial development, uh, in proximity to our site as well. Next slide, please. And here you can see a view looking in from King's Highway south to 30 feet of our frontage on King's Highway. Next, please. And that's the 60, E65th Street, frontage 19.5 feet. That's where E65th Street deadends. And you could see to the right, one of the Witty Lane homes. So it, it actually is nestled within that residentially-developed area. Next slide, please. And here, here's an image of the site. Uh, you can see the proposed, uh, self-storage building dropped into that, the Witty Lane homes. And then, of course, the two warehousing buildings that front our site between what would be our frontage and King's Highway. Next slide, please. Uh, and he- here's a site plan. One thing I want to point out, so we provide parking for 12 vehicles, and there are six storage bays. Uh, based upon the work that's been done by Storage Asset Management, we understand that on the average, the daily visits will be 16.4 renters. At the peak in December, it could be as many as 25 per day. And at, in January, you can drop down to an average of as low as 10 visitors per day. So the parking is more than sufficient for the proposed use with the 700 self-storage units. Next slide, please. And that's the elevation. It's 49 feet, four stories. It actually was going to be a taller building. It was five stories, but in deference to concerns we heard from the community board, we actually went back and altered the project to make it more compatible with the adjoining residential uses. Next slide, please. And now we get to the heart and the meat of the presentation, which are the finding, which is the finding that needs to be made by the commission. Next slide, please. And basically, the commission is called upon to determine whether this zoning lot is appropriate for the proposed self-storage use based upon the land use characteristics of the zoning lot and the surrounding area. Next slide, please. To help the commission reach, reach that determination, there are considerations that are put forth. And, and one of them is whether the use is consistent with the economic developments in the city for the designated area where this proposed facility is to be located. And that's critical. And I have to say, most respectfully, other than the fact that this site is situated within not, within an IBZ, and has been since 2006, reaffirmed in 2013, there has been no movement towards developing this site. This site historically started out as farmland in the late 1940s. It was used for tennis. And then in 2001, it was acquired by a client. It was ultimately rented for a school bus depot, which remained there up until 2016, when the school bus depot relocated and temporary uses were brought in. Um, it was used for storage for automobiles, and now it's being used for storage for Amazon delivery vans. Uh, next slide, please. So the other important consideration is the recent trends, levels of investment that might suggest that the Use Group 17, 18, 16D use is more appropriate than the self-storage. Well, there is, in the surrounding area, no dev- no investment. This, this, the area surrounding this site has been in this predominantly automobile uses and store, and warehousing. There is no significant, um, pressures for the development of more traditional manufacturing in the areas surrounding this site. Next slide, please. Um, and then we get to the size and configuration of this site. And that's, that's where it's really problematic. And Anthony Musto, um, who's our real estate consultant from Crosstown Realty, is going to testify to the history of this site and the absence of any interest in any, and the, the unseen hand of the market not reaching in, in any way for any development, which is why this site, other than the, the unimproved uses that have historically been here since the beginning of time, there's been no development at this site. At this point, I'm going to, uh, close my presentation. Uh, I, the, the other considerations that the commission, I know you will have looked at in our papers, are addressed. And I want to turn this over first to Mr. Musto and, and then to Alyssa, because I think they have some important points to make. Uh, Anthony?
Yes. Good morning. Can you, I'm not sure if I'm coming up here.
You are. We can see and hear you.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My, uh, my name is Anthony Musto. I'm a licensed Realtor for over 45 years, president of Crosstown Realty. We are a diversified real estate company, uh, specializing in the sales, leasing, management, and maintenance of commercial and industrial properties. Located mostly in Brooklyn, concentrating in the Canarsie, uh, East Flatbush area. But the past several years, there's been limited activity with regards to sales or leasing for manufacturing-type uses and surrounding the project site. Most properties I've broken over the years have been either, uh, the warehousing or motor vehicle storage. As I mentioned, being active in the area, there's been minimal interest for the specific property for a new commercial or industrial development to replace the historic uses and current uses, such as, uh, the school bus depot, automobile storage for a car dealership, and most recently, an Am- Amazon, uh, parking for their vans, delivery vans.
Thank you, Anthony. We're now going to turn to Alyssa, Storage Asset Management.
Hi, good morning. Uh, thanks for allowing me to join. My name, as Howard said, is Alyssa Quill. I'm the CEO of Storage Asset Management. Um, at our company, we manage over 500 self-storage facilities across the country, and we also do consulting for the self-storage industry. Um, our firm will be managing the daily operations of the proposed King's Highway self-storage facility if it's built. Um, in January of this year, we studied the existing supply of self-storage within a three-mile ring surrounding this location. Um, based on industry data, we know that renters typically travel less than three miles from their home or work in an urban market to rent storage space, and they typically don't want to go further than a 10-minute commute time. Uh, self-storage is used by local residents for everyday safe storage of personal items that don't fit in their homes or during a transition, like a move, uh, college, divorce, or passing of a loved one. Local businesses also use storage. Um, some examples of businesses that frequently use storage spaces at our properties are online retail shops like Etsy and things like that, um, vintage resellers, real estate agents, moving companies, contractors like plumbers, electricians, uh, anything in construction, uh, medical offices, uh, for extra supplies, furniture, um, records. Caterers often use, um, storage space for their extra equipment, um, schools, municipalities, and many nonprofit organizations.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Quill. That's, that's the time for you all. But we, we've, we've got plenty of questions for you, so you'll have more than, uh...
And if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just 10 seconds, what she didn't get to testify to, but hopefully come up in your questions, is a study that they did that demonstrates that this area is underserved with respect to the need for self-
Okay. Uh, let's get to, let's get to those questions then. So first, um, you know, I, I wanted to jump in with a few. Um, I understand from- I, I wanted to jump in with a few, um, I understand from Ms. Quill that, uh, the envisioned users of the self-storage facilities here would be sort of everyday users, people doing during a move, maybe local businesses like online retail, contractors, medical offices, do we have any, um, uh, understanding of particular users for whom this self-storage is needed in this area, or is it just sort of a generic self-storage serves these types of users?
It, it, it's the generic market, and, and Alyssa is able to speak to what generally is their mix, but it's just the general market for self-storage among that broad array of potential users.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, the facility, if constructed, would generate how many jobs?
It would generate, in terms of construction, seventy-five construction jobs, but Alyssa, how many jobs would it generate, uh, with respect to the operation of the site?
Probably five.
Five ongoing jobs, so we got the construction jobs, then five ongoing jobs, okay. Um, so, one of the points that you all did not mention, as we're considering the economic development objectives of the city, uh, is its proximity to, uh, a future train line at the IBX. Um, why no consideration of that, or why would, you know, shouldn't we be concerned about this as it relates to that opportunity from an economic development perspective?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman, because in fact, we did study that, uh, very heavily after it was brought up in an early review session, so although it didn't find its way into the application, I can address that, and we've talked to the MTA, we've talked to EDC, so the, the, the IBX, uh, would, as presently envisioned, would actually possibly have a station at Utica Avenue about four tenths of a mile from this site. Um, in terms of the use and development of this site, however, the IBX at best is at least ten years away, and, and possibly more, if it happens at all, and it's uncertain as to the Utica Avenue station, so we, we don't believe that within, with respect to the economic use and development of the site, the potential future of the IBX, at least at, at best a decade from here, should impact upon the, the present opportunity for the economic use of the site, I would add, however, and I think it's important, there's nothing about the proposed development of the site with self-storage that would be inimical in any way to the IBX, in other words, there's nothing about what we're proposing that would interfere with the proposed IBX.
Right, perhaps other than just lost opportunity for something else, but nothing about the development on this site would interfere with the construction of IBX?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, and unfortunately, with respect to the IBX, at this point in time, it's, it's highly speculative.
Uh, okay, so, uh, let, but let's talk about that point though, so let's say that some of us may believe or not believe in the future of IBX, um, once a self-storage facility goes up, it stays up, right, we don't know of, uh, events in which self-storage facilities have been constructed and have later, uh, you know, been redeveloped as industrial spaces down the line or others, is that right, at least I don't know of any, maybe, maybe you can cite some.
That, that, that would be correct, if, if it's ex- it's ex- if it's successful, as we would hope it would be, and if Alyssa is right with respect to the market, then in fact, that's what would be here at the site, if in fact, for any reason, it doesn't succeed, then there is a future opportunity for repurposing the building or redeveloping the site, and, and to that, I, I just want to comment something, I think it's, it's an important public policy issue, and that is the extent to which one seeks, because of an aspiration for the future, to force the banking of property, land banking, and I think that's a serious consideration here, particularly given the historic view with respect to not only going back to day one and when it was farmland, but more recently, since the advent of the IBZ and the reaffirmation of the IBZ in two thousand and thirteen, and the, the prior administration's ten-point program to try to bolster activity in the IBZ, none of that with respect to the surrounding area, let alone this project site has fostered any development, and that, and that, for that reason, we think from a public policy perspective, in fact, given the reason there is for, for this special permit at all, because as, as for those commissioners who served at the time this text was adopted, there, there was considerable controversy, and out of the gate, the intention in SubArea Two was to preclude self-storage entirely, but there was an accommodation made, and that was to allow under appropriate circumstances a special permit, and, and that goes, if I may take one more moment, to what, what I was disappointed with, and I say this in all due respect to the Borough President's recommendation against this project, because basically what he's saying is that self-storage doesn't belong in an IBX across the board, and, and that's not what, that's not what the text is.
In IBZs, in IBZs.
In the IBZ.
Right, I make that mistake too, yes.
Thank you, um, so, you know, and, and, you know, most respectfully, that's not what the text was intended to, and you're actually going to hear from, um, the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, and those of you who are here, when this text was adopted, knows, knows that they played an integral role in fostering ultimately the, the modification of the text to provide for this special permit, and when you look at all of your considerations that are suggested under the special permit provision, we do check all those boxes.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's, uh, debate that a little bit further, um, I, obviously, as you correctly referenced, the Borough President was a no without any conditions, the community board was also a no, um, let's talk about how the, um, the application here meets the economic findings as it relates to furthering the economic development goals for the IBZ specifically, you noted the Borough President's position, uh, and what you extracted that perhaps he is saying that he does not want to see self-storage in IBZs more generally, but let's focus on this one specifically for the purpose of this conversation, how does this advance the goals of the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ?
I, I think the intent of the text and that consideration, that question, goes not simply to the IBZ itself, because quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, as, as I, I said, as said before, in terms of the IBZ, this, this, this property has existed in its current state for these seventeen years since establishment of the IBZ, and there has been, there's nothing else underlying the programs or policies or objectives of the city that's fostered any development consistent with what we would aspire to see in the IBZ, and, and therefore, the question I think for the commission is, given the peculiarities of the site and, and given conditions in the surrounding area, do we then look for at least some economic use of this site beyond just asphalt and, and, and parking for storage vehicles, and I will say, um, if in fact, um, we, we can't get the special permit approved until sometime in the future when something may on speculation happen, that this, the school bus depot is coming back, as we've indicated, it was removed on a temporary basis in anticipation of hopefully being able to, uh, develop the self-storage here, but if that's not the case, the interim use for the Amazon vans, um, that, it's a, it's a short-term lease, that's going to terminate, and the school bus depot is going to come back, and I think from an economic development perspective, and I can't speak for the community, but in terms of the Witty Lane neighbors, I don't think that serves anyone's purposes and interests.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that it furthers, and you can tell me if I'm correctly summarizing what you're, what you're saying, is that it furthers, uh, the IBZ's goals because it is something over nothing, um, and that there were no underlying policies that have fostered change here, but at the same time, I do note that you discount the policies which conclude a future train that runs through Brooklyn and Queens that could actually prompt change for the IBZ and more broadly.
But the problem with that is that's not something that anyone can implement in the short term, it's at least ten years, if not longer, in turn, in the making, and at this point, it's, it's, it's on paper, it's a plan, and it's a plan, you know, there, there was going to be, uh, train to the plane, uh, with respectful aguadi to replicate what happened in JFK, but ultimately, decisions were made, and that plane, and there, there was, there was some considerable time devoted to that, 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 that then was off the boards, and so we don't know, we, none of us have that crystal ball with respect to the IBX, and I don't think it's appropriate, therefore, again, this notion of land banking, I don't think that's appropriate public policy, where, when the possibility IBX, again, which is speculative at this point, is at least a decade or more down the road.
Okay, last question for me, and then I'm going to go to my colleagues, did, did you all consider including any industrial uses here as part of the build program in this building?
We did.
And?
And, and it, it was determined not to be viable, and if, if what I'm going to say is not sufficient, Alyssa can chime in, but given the constraints of this site, and particularly given then the way in which we responded to the community in terms of, uh, reducing the building and reducing the number of units, this, this project originally was proposed with eight hundred and fifty storage units, it's now going to contain seven hundred units, again, in deference to the community's concerns about the building, but given the constraints of the site, uh, a mixed use just would not work here, both in terms of the logistics of moving vehi- vehicles on and off the site, uh, for, uh, industrial use mixed with the self-storage, as well as the, the building itself.
Sorry, last one then, one more last one, um, did you consider, other than moving the school buses back, did you consider other as-of-right, uh, uses that you, you might have entertained, uh, as part of this, uh, this site instead of self-storage?
Well, and, no, and, you know, I could bring Anthony Musto back because he would have testified to this, except I cut him off because of our ten minutes, but he could talk to the fact that, um, there had been some modest interest shown in this site, but nothing that had been brought to fruition, there is really not a market for anything with respect to this site right now, Anthony, are you still with us?
I don't, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, it's, it's, it's been a bit of a challenge for manufacturing uses, uh, in that, on that site, and, and, and most particularly, an industrial use or manufacturing use of any type with, given the characteristics of the site, the size, not the size so much, but the, the configuration of the parcel, the irregular shape, the loading is a bit, a big issue for this site, it's got a very narrow entrance on King's Highway, um, very difficult to access a trailer or trucks for that matter, um, the other problem is, you know, you, there's, you, you touched on the subway, I can't really speak to that, I've never, I have not heard that plan, it's news to me, but, um, right now, it's very difficult to access labor because of the two-fair zone, and, uh, the other issue with loading is, you know, you, you're adjoining residential homes, having tractor trailers come down a block where, 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 where homes are, it's a little problematic, it's not very conducive to an industrial use.
Okay, uh, and just so I understand the size of the school buses that are coming down that side, these are the full-size school buses?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, so the, the, the turning radius or the ability to get a, a, at least a vehicle the size of a full-size school buses is physically possible, but I understand, um, Mr. Musto's comment about, uh, you know, eighteen-wheeler trucks next to the, next to homes, I certainly, I, I understand that point, okay.
It's, yeah, it's not only the fact that it straddles the homes, but also just being able to get those trucks on and off the site, uh, the right, with that thirty-foot wide frontage, and, and then the, the curb cut is twenty-two feet, um, it's just not viable.
The other point I'd like to make is that the, given the shape of the site, to build a building of any substance there, y- you would lose so much space, there's so much area that you would have to sacrifice for loading and, uh, to access in and out, it's, i- it becomes a big loss factor.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Commissioners, area.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for the presentation and for addressing the questions, I, I very much agree with, uh, the line of inquiry of the Chair, and to build on that, wanted to ask you, uh, two quick questions, the first one is, um, a, so I, I understand your response to the Chair's question about potential connection to rail, but, um, I'm, I'm wondering why it's the, eh, configuration of the lot sort of such a, 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 a large impediment, isn't, for example, the fact that this is on King's Highway a major artery a plus?
Well, King's, we, we are four miles from the arterial, from the arterials, from the highways, we are, the, this portion of King's Highway actually isn't a truck route, the, the truck route on King's Highway and several blocks beyond us, um, and so in terms of mass transit, th- there, there is no plus, um, and King's Highway isn't a plus because of the difficulty, so the, King's Highway, our frontage, our thirty feet of frontage, is along the service road, so it i- it isn't that, it's, it's the, 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 the full width of King's Highway in terms of access, so that, that's what makes the utilization of this site for more traditional manufacturing uses problematic.
For more traditional uses of manufacturing, and that leads to my second question, which is, you know, you realize that in addition to the community board and the Borough President, industrial retention advocates, uh, associated with the IBC disapprove your, your proposal, even affordable housing advocates have been being, have been vocal about, eh, disapproving the, the proposal, um, for, for reasons associated with the type of jobs that you're offering and the missed opportunity, and so I'm wondering, have you considered sort of, uh, non-traditional manufacturing uses associated perhaps with climate adaptation, open industrial uses, et cetera, that could potentially respond to those concerns, specifically, have you marketed the property for that specific niche, the growing industry, the state is projecting significant growth associated with these types of green jobs, is there any evidence that you can show us so that we can understand, uh, the research that you've done, otherwise, what, what I see in the documents that have been shared with us are, you know, information going back to twenty fourteen for the industrial study, or the twenty-twelve open industrial uses study, which are at this point, ten years more or less out of date, so can you share more updated information about your own research in terms of this?
And, we can, absolutely can, and I will actually elaborate in writing, but we, we took those earlier studies that were cited in, in our application documents, and, and we ourselves walk the streets and work with Google Maps to understand why it exists presently, and in fact, the, the profile of the surrounding area is not very different than it was in two thousand, uh, fourteen with respect to those studies that were generated in terms of what is the predominant, the predominant uses with, within the area surrounding this site, and although there may be emergent industries, um, there's, there's been no activity in this surrounding area reflective of an interest with respect to those industries, and that's the conundrum, and, and that's the real problem, and that's, that's where I get back to the concern about land banking, and that's where I get back to the whole point of the existence of the special permit, because I, I respect what the Borough President says, I respect the advocate, the IBZ advocates in terms of their aspirations, but the reality is, their, their position is, uh, an IBZ can never be appropriate, an appropriate location for self-storage, but that's not what this commission said, that's not what the City Council said, they laid out the special permit, and one of the things that those who have risen in opposition to this application have not demonstrated to this commission, and, and we've not seen any evidence, that there is any opportunity presently, and certainly those who are the advocates, there is no, there's been no activity, in fact, to foster that kind of development or that opportunity with respect to this site, let alone the surrounding area, which is in fact the framework for the special permit.
Thank you for that, but just to clarify, is that something that you can share with us, like your, your research and the evidence that shows that there is no market for industrial?
Absolutely, absolutely, we, we will absolutely do that in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss, your knuckles?
Uh, Mr. Weiss, I'm looking at, uh, it looks like, uh, slide number twelve, um, which shows the, uh, entryway to the proposed project, which abuts, um, looks like the rear yard of, of, uh, several homes, uh, am I looking at this correctly?
Yes, so, um...
And, and my que- uh, my question, if you know it, is, um, those are trees, are those, those are actual trees?
Those, those, those are actual trees, yes.
And, and they are on the property of the homeowners or your property?
It's, it's, it's a mix, but what, what we will be doing, are you able to get back to that, that, okay, so, yeah, so those are existing trees, um, and for the most part, they are on the homeowner's property, we are actually going to be putting in front of those trees on, on, on the project site, an eight-foot-high, uh, fence, uh, a decorative fence that also, it's going to be soundproofed... fence that also, it's gonna be soundproofed, it creates a sound barrier, but tha- that's part of, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for referencing this slide, that's part of the challenge that, that, that we all have to take cognizance of. The fact that this site does above twenty-six homes on Witty Lane as, as, as well as the four homes on King's Highway, and the sensitivity, sensitivity to the nature of what could be a permitted use here within this edge of the IBZ, this, this edge of, of the manufacturing district right up against this R4 district. And interestingly, the, the, um, self-storage is relatively a benign use in terms of, of activity, the activity it will bring to the site that could impact upon these homes. Uh, I, I earlier referenced the number of visits on the average that we expect to come to the site, and, and so there's not going to be significant disruption, whereas a, a more traditional manufacturing use in fact could have more significant impacts as it relates to these homes.
Well, I would like to, and I, this is a, a very long, uh, 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 dimension here, but I would just like to see what you would envision. What would those homeowners confront when they went out into their rear yards and, uh, you know, looked at the boundary between this pro- uh, their property and, and your property?
Okay.
I would like to see, we, we will quickly look like, we will ge- quickly generate a rendering to submit to the commission. That would give you that perspective. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate your, uh, your testimony here today. We've got some members of the public who wish to be heard on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Um, first I'm gonna call up Daryl Holland of the BOC Network.
Daryl is not in the Zoom room.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to Quincy Eli-Kate.
Oh, where's the hand? Oh, yeah.
Good morning. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, so we can hear you and see you, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
All right, appreciate it. So, good morning, Chair Grodnik and Commission. I'm speaking to you today to urge you to vote no on the self-storage special permit application. Um, my name is Quincy Eli-Kate. I'm Director of Industrial Business Development at the Business Outreach Center, BACH Network. We're a nonprofit economic development organization that proudly supports industrial and manufacturing businesses and jobs across east and central Brook- Brooklyn, which have been the backbone of this community for generations. I, I'll get into a little bit about why this is important. I think it's, it's kind of a contrast of the application we heard earlier with Totem, with Leah Archibald, um, and what we're seeing today in this, in it, in this later application. Um, IBZs are critical to providing jobs for communities who have, you know, barriers to access. Um, and this site specifically would bring, developed as a self-storage, would bring almost no jobs to the local community. And contrary to what the developers are claiming, many aspects of this site would make it ideal for many industrial manufacturing businesses. The site is over seventy-three thousand square feet, has two vehicle access points, in addition to over three hundred and forty feet of frontage on the Bay Ridge Freight Rail track, a key part of the city's freight NYC initiative. Bus routes, the future, the potential future IBX passenger rail on Utica Ave, and the ability to have onsite parking make this site a really great place for future employees to, to have access their, their, their work site. And also, this site is just a short stone's throw away from the designated truck route in Brooklyn, making it a very unique and compatible for several potential industrial users. Um, I think, looking at the key finer points of the special permit, um, it definitely is not in part of the city's economic development objectives. Um, recent trends for levels of investments in these such groups, the IBZs are seeing record-breaking, uh, sales for square foot, foot prices for industrial land. So there is definitely demand here. And yes, the lot is a little bit flag-shaped, but we see industrial manufacturing businesses can adapt to that all the time. And then its proximity to a designated truck route make it ideal for an industrial user. So, um, happy for, to answer any questions and, um, urge you to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just, uh, probe a little bit on a, on a couple of these points, um, and we thank you for your, your presence here. Um, so you presented, um, what you called record-breaking need, demand, et cetera, in IBZs for space. That is the opposite of what we heard from the applicant and team about what is happening in this particular IBZ, at least from his experience, uh, Mr. Musto. So can you just, from your perspective, can you square? Can you square those together, or you, can you explain why you believe there is demand here that should be recognized for industrial space in a way that is different from the conclusion that the prior, uh, um, testifier, the applicant, um, noted?
Yeah. So, I mean, in du- the industrial real estate market, I think, um, if you're not familiar with it, was really much centered around, um, Massbeth, uh, in, in kind of western parts of Brooklyn, um, North Brooklyn. All of those prices, the prices in those areas have gone up dramatically, and a lot of the movement of industrial manufacturing businesses are to go out to, you know, East New York, uh, Jamaica, Flatlands Fairfield, to look for space where they can actually grow and operate. Um, so we're seeing, I mean, also last-mile logistics has put a significant pressure on industrial real estate prices. So the values that we've seen in last seven years have, you know, prices have gone up four or five times what they previously were. Um, it's created a lot of challenges for industrial manufacturing businesses, and what this self-storage special permit does is try to create a little bit more of a fair playground for industrial manufacturing businesses to be able to afford, instead of competing with self-storage development here. Um, so that's what we're seeing, and we see this site specifically because of its access to what we think is going to be a future transit hub as a really good location to cite a business where employees can actually get to.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I certainly understand that, that last point about the opportunity presented if IBX were to come to fruition, but I am struggling a bit with the point, uh, that there is so much demand that the market is, um, so hot that it is irrational for the applicants to be sitting before us today, because if the market is as the market is, presumably this application would look different. And so I, you know, I do wanna, I, I wanna give you a chance to respond to that, because, you know, w- we are in the position of enabling the things. The market frequently tells us what is viable and what is not, but if there were such demand for industrial space here, presumably the application would be different. No? Tell us why, tell me why that's wrong.
Because, s- I mean, self-storage development is, I think, very profitable. It create, it's almost no overhead. Um, it's kind of, you build it, it's copy-paste, it's really simple. It takes really no creativity, no real thinking, um, and they can make a really good return on it. You know, I think, but that's why we have these protections in place, um, is to make it more accessible for industrial manufacturing businesses. I mean, Leah said it earlier. Look, you know, industrial manufacturing businesses, which have a lot of employees, a lot of overhead, really can't pay the same rents as some of, you know, like a self-storage development could. So the economics are clear. There is a lot of, you know, last-mile logistics, um, demand, but, you know, building for manufacturers, you're not gonna get the, the return you would for self-storage development, and I understand that, but that's not a reason to go against our stated economic development objectives.
Okay, all right, I understand that. Let me, one then follow-up, and really this is an important one for us, um, because the applicant said that they're perceiving the percept, they're perceiving the, uh, the no from the Borough President and some of the articulation of the view of n- n- no self-storage in IBZ here to be a never, under any circumstances, as opposed to yes, if consistent with the city's overall economic development prerogatives. Where might you see this to be consistent, and I don't mean this application, where might you see, um, self-storage to be consistent with the city's economic development objectives?
Yeah.
Just more of a philosophical question, because we have to consider that, you know, at, when we're, we're looking at an application like this.
Most definitely. Um, you know, I think some of the, the critical pieces to look at is, you know, it has rail access, which makes it, you know, a, a really potential big lost opportunity for an industrial, potential industrial user. The size of the lot, um, is really significant. Um, it's got good access, all things that I think make it, uh, a, a real reason not to lose this opportunity. And then I think if there was some, you know, going back to the other application you heard today, where they're including, you know, a, a significant, you know, at least one FAR even of industrial manufacturing use in their development, it's like, come on, throw a bone. At least look at this site and consider it for a potential industrial manufacturing use to be integrated, but that has never been, uh, never been considered, never, we've never been approached, um, about anything that would, you know, try to make it a more holistic and, you know, well-thought-through project here.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is, it's the proximity to rail, the rail access, future IBX potential, plus size of lot, and also, as you noted in the beginning, um, the two, uh, two access points as well, um, if that's a fair summary of your, your position.
Definitely. You heard it.
Okay. All right. Let me go to Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks so much for your testimony. We appreciated, uh, your time and effort. We know you're busy. So really quickly, um, can you provide some examples of the types of industry sectors or the type of companies that you think would benefit from the amenities or infrastructure, um, assets that you outline? What types of businesses do you think this could be marketed to?
Yeah, most definitely. Um, I mean, there's a number of different users. I think there's everything from, you know, because it's close to a local community, um, you know, job-intensive uses, small manufacturers, food manufacturers, you know, could, these could be built into smaller spaces that would, I think, incubate larger businesses. And then if we're thinking of, you know, a single user, or, you know, maybe two or three much bigger users, um, you know, we work with Brooklyn Terminal Market, which is right up the railway. They use the rail for food unloading. Um, we see that as, you know, a viable option. Um, you know, a place where you can actually park and have industrial use space for parking is really limited in a lot of the areas, you know, when you're going more west in Brooklyn or into Massbeth or wherever. So a number of different users, we see, um, you know, distribution, um, manufacturing could, could operate here. Um, think of it as ideal.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kamon?
Thank you, and, and thank you for your testimony. Just a quick question. If I'm remembering this correctly, the site has been vacant for seventeen years, so just wondering if your opinion is it would be better served if nothing were on it, or if it continued the subleasing or, and then based on what you just said, that it is an appealing site, has it just not been advertised? Like, why doesn't anybody want it?
Yeah, so w- we've yet to see this site advertised on the market for industrial users. Um, you know, yeah, I, I mean, if it were to remain a bus depot parking lot for, you know, the next couple of years, then so be it. You know, I think we're losing, I think planning perspective is, you know, a lot of this size in this area, um, should be thought of, you know, a longer-term vision than just, you know, in the next couple of years. Um, so yeah, if, if they were to just leave it as a bus depot for the, for the time being, then so be it. Um, it's not that bad of a scenario. I mean, they've owned the land since, I believe, two thousand and one. I mean, this is land banking, what they're doing, um, and then speculating, hoping to turn it into a self-storage facility at this point. So, look, uh, you know, maybe their best case is they leave it like this, and this becomes a transit hub, and they can actually do something more productive with this, uh, this space in the future. So, um, I just think it's such a lost opportunity to, to develop it for self-storage, which will be its fate for the next hundred years or foreseeable future.
Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you very much for your testimony. We're gonna move on to, uh, uh, the next person who has signed up.
Thank you.
Which is Ryan Kegel, if he is in the Zoom. Oh, hell, in the room even. Okay, Mr. Kegel, welcome. And whenever you're settled, uh, make sure that that microphone has a green light on it, and you have three minutes, so welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Grodnik, um, and Commissioners. Um, my name is Ryan Kegel. Uh, I, I work with Quincy Eli-Kate, uh, at Business Outreach Center Network, BACH Network. Um, you know, I, I can kind of, you know, we, we have a lot of the same views, obviously, um, but, so, uh, the high demand for industrial real estate, um, w- we are asking you to oppose this application. Um, so it's, it's not our view. It's, it's, according to a recent industrial real estate analysis by JLL, um, and I can send you the source for this, uh, in my written testimony, um, the Flatlands Fairfield East New York area has a zero percent vacancy rate for manufacturing and industrial real estate. This is, um, two-point-seven million square feet. A separate report by a different, um, commercial real estate, industrial real estate, uh, firm brokerage above shows that, and I quote, sixty-three percent of industrial deals purchased by institutional investors in second half of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, were either industrial outdoor storage or development sites, very similar to this one. Uh, additionally, I would argue that IBZs are, are working as intended. Uh, the, the same above report shows that all of the industrial land development sales in second half of two thousand and twenty-two were inside IBZs, all of them. And then, and then a Brooklyn-wide average price per square foot for industrial was four hundred and sixty-four dollars per square foot. Um, Quincy had mentioned the site has approximately three hundred and fifty feet of rail frontage on the eastern border, uh, well-positioned to talk to, to, to connect to New York and Atlant- Atlantic Railroad. We had a phone conversation with them, and, you know, anecdotally, they said, yeah, they can make it happen. They're talking to another business just down the street. Uh, the potential Utica Avenue Station is, is about three blocks from the site. And I think this is another important point regarding self-storage, is that, so within a one-mile radius, there are five self-storage facilities. All of them are within the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ, all five. This would be the sixth. So there's a clear cluster of self-storage in the industrial business zones, and that is what the special permit is here to protect, protect against. Uh, a former commissioner, Larissa Ortiz, one of my, uh, career heroes, um, I thought, put it really eloquently when we were dealing with the self-storage application at Home Depot. She said that the self-storage developers will win every time. If you pit manufacturing jobs and manufacturing businesses against self-storage developers, self-storage will win every time. And that's why we have, you know, the, this public policy to preserve and protect industrial manufacturing jobs. So again, I ask you to disapprove this application for self-storage. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna clarify, I, I, I was taking some notes. You said that there were fi- there were five existing?
Yes.
Self-storage facilities within this IBZ?
Within one mile, within one square mi- within one-mile radius.
Ah.
And all five of them are, are within the Flatlands Fairfield IBZ.
They're in the IBZ, okay.
Yep.
Um, and the stat that you gave at the outset about the zero percent vacancy rate among two-point-seven million square feet of industrial space in this IBZ?
Uh, I, I believe, so this is from- Uh, I, I believe, so, this is from JLL's data.
Yep.
And, and this combines um, the Flatlands Fairfield and East New York IBZ, um, so, whi- which is nearby, but, but separate, and furthermore, uh, I'm not positive that JLL um, uh, used the IBZ boundaries, they may have just been referring to Flatlands and East New York as neighborhoods, um, a- again, I'm happy to say.
Well, but if it, okay, well, we should, we'll, we'll have to take a closer look at that, but if it included them as neighborhoods and included the IBZs and still has a zero percent vacancy rate, that would be even more inclusive than the narrower, just IBZ for Flatlands Fairfield or for East New York, it would seem to me, but we sh- we will take a, a closer look at that. Um, okay, and uh, and one more point of clarification on that JLL report, which, which you may or may not be able to answer here, is presumably the um, the self-storage was not included in that statistic about the two point seven million square feet, correct?
Um, I don't know, but I would, I would not assume that it was left out.
Okay, because, well, I, well, it, you know, it, you recited that it's vacancy rate for industrial, I don't know if we were counting self-storage as industrial space in that study, but we will take a close look at it, and we will, we will figure out the answer.
Thank you for your interest in that.
Um, but good, okay, thank you, let me see, okay, Commissioner Gold?
Sorry, just one quick one, when you do submit the written testimony, it'd be interesting to see the, the site on that and to see the report, so if you can just make a point of it.
Absolutely, I'll submit today, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodrich.
W- w- we're not hearing the question on Zoom, or uh, microphone.
If may, just give us a second on Zoom, we'll uh...
Okay, sorry, um, my question is, since there are already five um, self-storage facilities, you have a good sense about what it, what negative impacts it, you know, they may have contributed to a neighborhood, I've seen in another context of people complaining about crime and other things, but I was wondering, you know, what in your opinion has been the negative impacts of having self-storage, like, what exactly does it do to a neighborhood, and what would it do to this particular, and, you know, you didn't even have to say what would it do, you can just describe what you think it has done, because I think my general thing is, okay, well, what, on the flip side, if it hasn't done anything, then what really would be the big deal of adding a six?
Um, thank you for the question, I think in general, um, self-storage creates blight, um, it's a dead zone, it's um, it's, you know, lifeless area, in, in some cases, um, even in my own personal neighborhood in Brooklyn, there are self-storage facilities directly across the street from each other and, and others going up, and it's just, it's just a dead zone where, um, it, it can feel unsafe at night, um, you know, it can cause, cause problems associated with, with crime, because there's no, no, no eyeballs on the street, and so on. Um, I think in terms of, i- i- within the, within this context and within the IBZ, um, at the Community Board meeting, they stressed the need for jobs, they talked a lot about the need for jobs, and, um, you know, all due respect with anybody working inside a self-storage facility, but, um, you know, five jobs being a security guard essentially for a self-storage facility is probably not the best career path, and in the industrial manufacturing sector, these are high-quality jobs with prospects for a career path that are accessible for people without college degrees, um, these are the kinds of jobs that I think the Community Board really, you know, wants in their community, um, and the self-storage facility represents, you know, the opposite of those opportunities, they represent, y- you know, dead-end jobs that don't have a future, that have low wages, that, you know, um, are, are, you know, taxing in terms of, uh, not really requiring, uh, highly specialized skills and so on, um, so, so I think for those reasons, self-storage is not an appropriate term for the site, yeah.
Oh, sorry, one last question, because I think it's a sticking point.
Sure.
Um, for, I think, a lot of Commissioners, and when they give you another opportunity to address it, but, um, the fact that it's been seventeen years, the, the, because this comes up in these projects a lot, right, the, the nothing, and then the something is better than nothing, um, you know, can you, I know you've addressed, like, the negative impacts, but can you address, like, the fact that it hasn't been developed for a very long time, now there would be something there which would provide of some benefit to some people, um, so what exactly is your argument against that?
Well, um, we've seen no evidence that it's been marketed whatsoever, it hasn't been on the market, so how could there be a- any potential offers, like, you know, I, I, um, I don't have any offers on, on the shoes that I'm wearing, because they're not on the market, you know, and so, to ha- to say that, you know, well, nothing's happened with this site, we've been sitting on it for twenty years, that i- it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, w- would be my initial argument, um, and then, and then secondly, I mean, a- again, you know, study after study, article after article, you can see that the industrial market is red-hot, and, um, and while, and while the industrial market may not be able to achieve the same profit goals of self-storage, because again, self-storage is cheap to build, easy to maintain, you know, rakes in cash, that's hard to compete with, um, but, I, I would argue that, that if marketed, um, for, for market rates, um, you know, appropriate price, appropriately priced, that this site could easily find a developer, it's a big site, this is seventy-five thousand square feet with two entrances, right on the train line, with, with freight rail access.
Okay, Commissioner Benjamin?
When you look at...
Oh, sorry, when you look at this site and the access and ingress from King's Highway, which is how presumably industrial trucks, et cetera, would come in, how do you envision that working, um, with an industrial user who needed to have trucks come in, would you envision them fronting in and backing out onto King's Highway, would you, how would you envision that setup, and how would that affect the neighbors' rear yards?
Um, thank you for the question, I, um, I would, I would first clarify that this is an M-one-one site.
I understand that.
This is designed...
You don't need to clarify that.
But, but, w- light industrial, so, so the, the prospect of, of, you know, very, very large trucks, I, I think is, is, um, y- you know, perhaps less of, of, of a consideration, that the trucks would be smaller, flatbed trucks, and, and I would, I would assume, and I'm not a, a landscape architect or an architect by any means, but, but I would assume that they would, would be able, would be enough room to turn in, not back out, um, do the school buses back out currently in, in, into King's Highway?
I have no idea.
I, I, I don't know, but, but, but I would, I, I assume that there is enough room for them to, to pull into the driveway, turn around in, inside the lot, and then turn out.
Well, right now the site is vacant, so the school buses don't have that problem.
Well, um, yes Commissioner, but, but previously, and, and, and the Amazon, uh, vans that are there now, and, as well as the...
Right, but the site is vacant, so there's all the room they want to maneuver that they, they have.
Right.
Um, and I was just wondering if we could ask Mr. Weiss to come back and ask him some questions, uh, about the marketing of the site or what they've done?
We can do it at the end, you can do it at the end if he's willing, my microphone. Okay, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, Commissioner Osorio, and I will note the mics are not, or at least my mic is not working, yours is either, no mics are working, so let's just take a quick thirty-second break, stay with, stay with us for a second.
You blew up the mic.
Yeah, it was my, no, Leah did. Leah ruined all the mics.
Commissioner Benjamin's mic was working.
It was, but it's not anymore. No, Leah broke it before me.
No, it was working for Leah, it was working when I turned yours on.
I, I think, it's not green, but I feel like I heard it.
Yeah, the, the mics are working, I'm picking it all up.
You can hear us, Commissioner Dweck?
It's the, it's the speakers, not the mic. It's the speakers in the room.
Oh, so you can hear us, please attach, Commissioner Dweck, you can hear me loud and clear on Zoom?
I can hear you, but you, you're not talking into the mic right now, maybe you are, and then I can't hear you, so, I'm hearing you from another mic, get another mic on, in the room.
The mic is live there, Ryan.
All right. Hello?
Test, test.
Yeah, that's working.
Let's give it Commissioner Osorio. Can you hear me?
No, 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 you're gonna have the handheld.
Thank you, so, so thanks again so much for being here, we appreciate your time, um, I have two quick questions, one is really just for the record, I just want to make sure that I understood correctly, that you as a active, eh, industrial retention advocate and a, a professional in the, in the, in this particular IBZ have not, are, are not aware that this has been marketed, I just want to make sure I understand, for industrial uses, I, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly and make sure that's on clear on the record.
I, I have seen zero evidence that this site has been marketed for industrial uses other than self-storage, um, and I would also note that during the Borough President hearing, the Borough President's Office requested evidence of marketing, um, and I, I do not know if they received that evidence or not.
Thank you for that, and then the second question is, so, so we just heard, I, I really appreciate the emphasis that you made in terms of potential access to rail for freight, and I'm wondering if you can help us understand a little bit, sort of, to, to, to understand, so why is this not a major asset in terms of what the applicant, or how the applicant is thinking about the potential, I'm wondering if you can help us understand, what would be the infrastructure required to be able to access, uh, a rail for freight in this location, like, what, what does that entail?
Um, I, I'm, I'm not honestly qualified to speak d- um, directly to that, I, I know only that, that it abuts, um, the rail, and, and I know that when we, uh, had a phone conversation, um, a casual conversation with representatives from New York and Atlantic, um, they, they were very positive, they were like, you know, call us and we can definitely make it happen, um, there are, there, you have a couple of different options, um, whether the, whether the freight train actually goes all the way into the property, or whether it just kind of, you know, stops there and you have a, a dock, um, so I think there are a lot of considerations, um, but, I, I, while I can't say, you know, what are all the requirements, uh, I feel qualified enough to say totally doable.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
I was, I was thinking about, I, I went to high school not that far from here, and the area, we get a lot of proposals in, around this area, and, um, a lot of times, the residents reject it or don't want it because they don't want additional foot traffic, um, they don't, they, they want to keep the area residential, and a lot of the, the areas haven't been as transit-rich, there's like a subway mile, you know, like, a, a, far away, and so I guess, uh, m- m- one of my first things I was thinking about is, like, in, say, like, Edstuy or like Brooklyn Heights, that's a lot more, that there are a lot more commercial, um, stores, and so, what, what would be the, what would you want instead of storage facility, because I think, I, I need to reckon with the fact that, like, a lot of people come and they don't want the stores, they don't want the additional foot traffic, they want to keep it more residential, and I know you mentioned blight and what the, the negative impacts, but I guess I'm also thinking, eh, for this particular neighborhood, that it wouldn't, it mu- it wouldn't necessarily be the same as other busier neighborhoods, so, speak to that.
Uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner, um, so, I think, in terms of foot traffic, um, eh, what, what we would really want to see on this site are, would be jobs, and so, so the foot traffic would be individuals who, who work at the facility, coming in in the morning and, and leaving in the afternoon, um, you know, I, I don't think we envision, like, this big mixed-use complex where you have, you know, big-box retailers and boutiques and so on, where you have a lot of foot tra- traffic, I, we don't envision a, a destination commercial area, you know, we envision, um, a, a relatively small manufacturing or, or industrial firm, um, with, with, you know, high-quality employees, um, that again, would come in and leave in the morning, and this site, um, I, I think by nature of its size and also by requirements of the zoning, as, as all of you know, um, is required to have onsite parking, and I think there's room for onsite parking, and so I think that the, the, uh, impact on the neighborhood, should there be, a, a, should this site be preserved for manufacturing and industrial uses over self-storage, I think would be minimal. Please.
It's not on.
Oh, okay, huh, one last question, um, can you provide a li- because I think this will come up, can you provide a little bit more explanation, like, when you, look, I'm just gonna be blunt, we have some people who come and testify, and they, um, don't want either low-income housing in their area, they say all these sorts of, um, phrases, and so I just want for you to explain a little bit more when you're referring to these, like, y- you know, jobs when you're describing them, um, can you explain a little bit, because I, I think my first thought was, um, and I think I'm sure, and I'm not the only one, um, of like, just not wanting the storage facility, not wanting, um, l- low-income or low-wage workers, like, in the neighborhood, or is that...
Um, giving you an opportunity to explain here, so we...
Well...
So, I, we don't have to fill in blanks.
Um, again, thank you for the question, thank you for being candid, um, and so, I, eh, Business Outreach Center Network, we, we are not a, a housing or neighborhood organization, right, and so, so, you know, our, our, our focus is, is really on, you know, small business support, um, and so, so in terms of, uh, of what we, it, it's not that we don't want to see low-wage workers walking around in the neighborhood, we want to see, uh, high-quality opportunities for people that live in the neighborhood, because I, I think there's a significant opportunity cost, um, that, that if this self-storage development goes up, and it will never go away, that, that this site could be, could have been, um, a, a site where, where people start their careers, or, or, or achieve greater success, um, you know, a, a site with, with more potential than, than, you know, the storage of residential clutter. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner.
Appreciate it, let me, uh, go next to Rick Russo of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, who is with us on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, this is Rick Russo, Chief Operating Officer at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, and I'm testifying to express the chamber's support for the application of Claritin Holdings for a special permit from the City Planning Commission to allow a self-storage facility at fifty-three eighty-one King's Highway in Brooklyn. Uh, those who were members of the commission in twenty-seventeen, when the self-storage text amendment requiring a CPC special permit to build self-storage facilities on sites located in SubArea Two was approved, will recall that the Brooklyn Chamber played an integral role in shaping the current text of the self-storage text amendment. We advocated for the self-storage industry to ensure that the proposed text amendment would not unduly harm the self-storage industry, which provides vital services to New York City residents and businesses alike. Upon approving the self-storage text amendments in twenty-seventeen, the commission stated in this report that the special permit provision was not intended to send a message that self-storage facilities should not be located in industrial business zones, instead, the purpose of the special permit was to require careful consideration of whether a particular site is appropriate for the proposed self-storage use. As a result, zoning resolution section seventy-four dash nine thirty-two provides that the City Planning Commission may approve a self-storage facility in SubArea Two upon finding that, quote, "the zoning lot is appropriate for such self-service storage facility use based on the land use characteristics of the proposed zoning lot and the surrounding area," end of quote, "and list factors, uh, that the commission may consider making the required finding." Based on what the applicant team articulated this morning, the Brooklyn Chamber concurs that this application satisfies each of those considerations. In fact, we believe that the subject application is precisely what was intended by the City Planning Commission and City Council when they approved the self-storage text amendment and established a special permit for self-storage in SubArea and established a special permit for self-storage in SubArea Two IBZ locations. The apparent lack of interest in development of the project site for industrial use seem to typify the current landscape of the surrounding area within the fair, the Flatlands, FLIBZ. The use is prevalent in the surrounding area, including warehousing and automotive service and repair businesses with limited industrial job-generating manufacturing uses. It is also our understanding that if a special permit is not granted, the project site will revert back to a school bus depot, which we are told was relocated from when the self-storage use was contemplated. A return of the school bus depot, which is permitted as a right in the underlying M11 district, will not benefit residents or local businesses. A self-storage facility, on the other hand, offers a symbiotic relationship between small businesses, manufacturing users, and residents alike. Development will create construction jobs, support local businesses, and stimulate commercial activity, none of which will occur with the return of the school bus depot. The Brooklyn Chamber believes that from an economic development perspective, we would much prefer to see this site developed as a self-storage facility than as a return of the school bus depot or continuation of the current delivery van storage. Therefore, we strongly urge the Commission to grant this special permit. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, terrific, thank you very much, uh, for being with us, Mr. Russo. We appreciate your time and attention. Um, I'm going to ask the applicant, uh, to come back for a moment. I believe Commissioner Benjamin had a couple of follow-ups and perhaps there are follow-ups from others. Thank you for your willingness to do that, it helps, uh, bring clarity to all this. I'm gonna...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Um, based on the presentations of some of the other people spoken, I have some additional questions and I'm hoping you can respond to them, uh, preferably in writing, but if you have the answers here. Um, the first is whether you know the occupancy of the other self-storage facilities in the one-mile radius?
Yeah, we're aware of them, in fact, they were cited in our application documents.
Okay, maybe I missed it, but if you could ex- explicitly address that in writing for me, I would be very grateful.
Absolutely, absolutely, and if I could just supplement that, um, we'll also provide you with a study that was done by Storage Asset Management. With those facilities in place, within that one-mile radius, this, the, the area is still underserved with respect to the demand for self-storage by residents and local businesses, and we'll provide those details as well.
Okay, and which goes to question number two. Do you expect that the users of this facility would be local residents who live within a mile or two of the site? Or would you be marketing this facility to a wider audience?
A thousand percent, it's, it's marketed to and the renters will come principally from the local area. And again, we'll, we'll expand on that, uh, because Alyssa Quill from Storage Asset Management has addressed that as well.
Okay, and, um, several of the speakers addressed whether there has been marketing of this site to an industrial base. And I was wondering if you could tell me if you gave the Borough President certain information or if you didn't, um, whether you could address for us during the eighteen years, what efforts you have made, if any, to find a tenant and use group sixteen, seventeen or, I guess you could go all the way down to, what, thirteen? Uh, what efforts you've made to market it, whether you've, uh, had real estate, uh, firms specifically for industrial space that you've used to try and find tenants? I understand the difficulty, given that they would have to build a building, um, of finding someone who would want to use the space and would feel that they would get enough of a return to justify building the building. But I would appreciate understanding more during the course of the eighteen years, who you've leased the space to and what the marketing has been.
I, I will certainly, we will certainly provide that in writing, but, um, the short answer, and this really has to come from, uh, Mr. Musto, who testified across Town Realty, who actually specializes in commercial industrial use and has been associated with this property for a long time. There, I, I will say there was not an active marketing campaign, um, but as, as he testified and will embellish on, the market doesn't exist. Um, but we'll, we'll provide you with a detailed written response.
And last for, um, Chair Garadnik, I was wondering, since this is a special permit, could there be conditions on a special permit if, let's say, we thought that it was an appropriate land use for twenty years? Could, is that a condition that we could adopt along with the project? I understand.
Yeah, let, let me, uh, investigate that question and come back to you. I think, I think the answer is yes, but I, I will want to confirm that.
Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, wait.
Of course, Commissioner.
Clarifying some of our questions, I have two quick follow-ups. Um, one is, um, in your response, uh, to the conditions, uh, required, uh, you, you state that two of the five facilities that are within a mile are within a quarter mile.
That's correct.
And you further state that nonetheless, there's a unmet need for it. How did you determine that?
Um, Alyssa Quill in Storage Asset Management actually did a marketing study based upon what exists and industry standards and based on both the number of households within the one-mile radius and per capita. She came forth with the statistics as to the extent of the unmet need, and we'll provide that detail, but it's actually very significant.
Okay, thank you, so you'll, you'll provide that...
Well, I, we'll, we'll provide you with a copy of the report that they generated.
Thank you for that. And then the other quick question that I have is, in your responses to the conditions, you also state that King's Highway is a local truck route. Although not a major sort of a truck route, you, you, um, recognize that it is. And so I'm wondering if you can help us understand why is that not an asset for the type of light manufacturing that could be potentially hosted here? That's one, one, one quick question. And then the other one is, you know, we heard from some of the folks testifying that, eh, access to rail for freight is possible. And so I'm wondering if, if you've, eh, explored that and, and, and why not, why is that not another asset in terms of potentially marketing the property for industrial?
With respect to the truck route, my understanding is, and again, I'm gonna verify this in writing, that actually the King's Highway truck route, uh, terminates within several blocks distant from our, our site. So technically, if the city and the, the police were to enforce, um, there, there is no truck route actually on King's Highway adjacent to our site. But I, I think that really, in all due respect to everyone, begs the question. The, the key is really the accessibility of the site physically, the physicality. And I, I think Commissioner Benjamin was getting to that because as an open, unimproved lot, school buses, vans, storage of automobiles, you have free rein in terms of how you maneuver around the site. But you saw the image of our proposed building, which is fairly tight. That does not allow for easy truck access. And if you're gonna have a traditional manufacturing, you're not talking about four-wheel box trucks. You're talking about at least, uh, you, uh, some modicum of tractor-trailer if it's going, if it's gonna be a substantial use. And there is not that ability to bring those trucks in, have them turn around and come out. They would have to back out, it's gonna, it's actually, would wreak havoc with respect to both the, the operations on the site as well as, eh, eh, you know, and I, I think although the special permit doesn't take cognizance of this, I do believe that the Commission should, the impact on the adjacent residential uses. Because we do straddle that, that our four district, which is fully developed. And, uh, right now, I know the, we, independent of the Community Board, conducted meetings within the community and we had the Witty Lane homeowners meet with us. And one of the things, they're, they're not happy now with the Amazon, uh, vans coming on and off. They were never happy with the school bus depot. I can assure you, they, they, they'd be frightened by a true manufacturing use being on the site and trucks having to move on and off and not being able to maneuver.
And so access to rail, just to understand, because that in my mind could, eh, eliminate the need for trucks altogether. Have you explored that?
No, we haven't explored it. The, the, let me just say, in all candor, Clarndon hasn't explored itself developing, uh, on speculation, the manufacturing building here. And it hasn't therefore sought to engage with, with whether it's, it's the rail infrastructure. But the reality is, right now, there is no access. But I, I think whether or not there would be that access really begs a question as to whether or not the site actually really works and whether in fact the market exists. I, I heard the testimony about the, the occupancy rate and the fact that there's no more land available. Given what we all know about the unseen hand of the marketplace, if in fact there was a potential to develop this site, they, whether or not we were marketing it, you know there would be brokers seeking to in fact engage the owner and in fact force the development here, and that's not something that's happened. But I, we, I will also endeavor to get more information for you with respect to the adjacent rail. But I, I really don't think it's a factor. I, I think that testimony, in all due respect, he was being somewhat disingenuous in terms of the significance of the fact that the right-of-way may, may be adjacent to our site.
Look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. And thank you, uh, to everyone who has testified on this item. I do believe we've come to the end of the line here, uh, for people wishing to testify. So we will close the hearing on calendars thirteen and fourteen. And I will ask, uh, you, Madam Secretary, if, uh, there is any other business pending before the Commission today.
No, Chair Garadnik, there is no other business before the Commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meeting's page of the NYC Engage Portal, through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Terrific, thank you very much. With that, uh, I want to express my appreciation to members of the Commission, uh, certainly to members of the public for being with us today, either in person or on Zoom. Uh, and we will see you all on, uh, June fifth. And with that, we are adjourned, thank you.